Hey there, Kendall County. This is John Tipton.
And I'm Robert Seines and we're with the Texas Examiner.
Today, we have an exciting episode for you. We have our third of the three contested candidate forums. And we are discussing District Two today? Three, my apologies. So District Three.
Bernie City Council.
So again, folks, this is the third. If you've missed the first two, at the end of this, go back to your YouTube or in your rumble and it'll be in the down in the drop down menu there and you can catch the other two if you want to as well. So.
Yeah, it's great to have contested races. We only had one in the county elections recently. And so it's good to see that people are getting involved in their in their city politics. Or elected office.
Well, and I think it's very important as well that our candidates are making themselves available to their constituents, understanding that not everybody can make it to every candidate forum. Not everybody can, you know, either for work or personal reasons, whatever. But this is an opportunity for these candidates to reach their constituents. So thank you all for 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 doing that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Well, why don't we start with our incumbent city councilman?
Let's do it.
Mr. Quentin Scott, welcome, Quentin. Yeah. So Quentin, what we like to do is find out a little bit more about you, you know, who Quentin Scott is, how he ended up here in Bernie and what got you involved in politics?
Well, I moved Bernie twenty-two, twenty-three years ago. I did my time outside of the county over in Van Derr for a while. But as my kids get into school, we we knew Bernie schools was a better place to go than Van Derr. So we got our kids into Bernie's Bernie schools. I started renting probably fifteen, seventeen years ago over in the same district, same neighborhoods that I live in today. Kids grew up in Bernie schools. They've all graduated. We've got one servant in the military, two at college and one works here full time in town. And I got into, this is probably my fifth year for city council. I kind of got in on a whim. I went to my first city council meeting and to talk to the city council and and talk about an issue that I had. And sure enough, District Three representative had resigned and they were given that notice of resignation at that council and they were calling for an election.
So you walked right into this.
So I looked at my wife, maybe I'll run. Sure enough, someone signed up. That's where I met Dan for the first time. He signed up as well.
Oh, really? So you guys both ran for the the seat at the same time? All right, so.
So yeah, that was my first meeting with Dan and was on city council. Probably there was an expired term, so it was only a year. I had to do it again. So after after a year, I ran again, then it got one of the elections got pushed because of COVID. We ended up doing it in November. So this is the fourth time running in five years.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service to our city of Bernie, Texas. And and Dan, thank you for having the courage to run in today's environment. The political environment is not easy. I I I know. And so.
Think it has politics.
So so tell us a little bit about yourself, Dan, and.
Just trying to represent our neighbors. At least that's that's mine. And I hate to work constituents because it makes me sound like comrades or something. It just isn't the right word.
Right.
So people are neighbors to me. Going to be my neighbor, whoever wins this election.
Right.
Like I've been his neighbor after he won the election. How I got here? Let's see, I was a medic, so I always went, I was at Fort Sam and I always rode my motorcycle up through the hill country and Bernie was the starting and stopping spot of of everything that I've done, coming and going on the motorcycle. And the gas station that used to have great barbecue, plenty of gas, right on the corner of River Road and Main Street.
I remember it.
And that's been empty for how many years now? They just tore it down saying, well, we're gonna, someone's gonna buy it. That 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 was, that really broke my heart. But being in the military, I retired in El Paso, stayed there for seven years. Well, I found a job working for the Air Force and I commuted for a year on my motorcycle.
My goodness.
To El Paso.
On your motorcycle.
Nine hours, eight hours. Yeah.
So I tried to find a job as quick as I could. It took a year, but we when I ride through Bernie, all the energy just releases.
Sure.
And that's kind of why I we've decided to stop in Bernie. It's just yeah, the energy releases and like Quentin, we don't, or not like Quentin, this part, we don't have children, but we wanted to be around people who wanted smart kids. So that's another kind of reason why we wanted to make sure we moved to Bernie. And then using connections with the military and the realtors and realtors' wives or soldiers' wives that are realtors. They found a great house for us and it's our forever home. We've been here fourteen years. And right now, we're not planning on leaving.
Great.
Interesting.
So John, I before we started shooting here, Dan told me he's a cheese head. Green Bay Packer fan.
Oh, really?
Is that right?
How's that working out?
Oh, it's great right now. I didn't know if I had the love, but I got a little bit more love now.
Right.
A lot of Packer fans in Bernie, Dan?
Oh, nobody hates the Packers really in Bernie.
No.
But.
It's the Redskins and the Eagles, right? They don't like here.
Yeah. If you go to San Antonio, everybody loves the Raiders. I don't know.
Interesting.
They do.
Yeah.
Never noticed that.
Yeah, I have. He's right.
Okay, then.
Right. So so Quentin, you guys get paid a lot in city council, I'm assuming, right?
Well, that's why they were fighting over the job the first time.
What's what's the pay?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Fantastic.
And do you pay taxes on that?
And we do pay taxes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's ten ninety-nine. So whatever whatever tax bracket, yes.
So so you're not doing it for the money? And why are you coming back for more?
I just love it. I love the people. I love the staff that we work with. I love the area. I know a lot of people in my district and so I just I just love it. It is service, really. It is service.
It is.
So it's service is love.
So you mentioned you were you were in the military for a while. What'd you do in the military?
I was a medic.
Okay, and a medic. And did you serve overseas or primarily stateside?
First fifteen years, I was overseas quite a bit. Didn't realize I was married. Then I realized I was married.
Right.
Not that I didn't know I was married, but somebody else has a say of what happens now.
Right.
And that's kind of why I followed her here as quick as we did. But yeah, Desert Shield, Desert Storm, Central America. Last job I, or one of the last jobs I had in El Paso at the Southern Major's Academy was battle staff and we did it virtual and we created a virtual machine so we could have Army's computers, Army Battle Computer Systems on a regular computer so students could actually fight a fight without using sim with the simulation never leaving.
Right.
El Paso.
Right.
And then obviously, we had to go to those locations to make sure that if anything ever went down, we could still have the fight and they students could graduate.
Right.
So that was a that was a great year and a half until they kicked me down into the SIM Center.
So is that what you're doing now is contracting for for the military?
No, I work as a DA civilian for the Installation Management Command.
Okay.
Installation Management Command owns all the Army garrisons in the world, to include Poland, Romania. Anywhere where there's a there's a post, we've it follows somehow back to Fort Sam. And we're the Army's home. We own the whole installation. The Army decided to take that away from the senior commander, let the warfighters worry about fighting the war and let somebody else worry about housing, roads, water, all the infrastructure that goes goes with what do you want to call it, an installation.
Right, right. So when the decision came down, and this really doesn't have anything to do with the election, but when the decision came down that we're going to start changing all the installation names, what was the was USNS coming involved in that?
It was it was our flags that changed.
Okay, right. So what was the the scuttlebutt? How were people really feeling about having to change?
Say.
I'm never gonna get used to being, it's always gonna be brag, it's always gonna be vetting.
Still follow the, what do you want to call it? There is a chain for civilians also.
Right, no, I understand completely. I just tried to sneak that one in there and see if you'd come out and give us, I know, I know.
Figured it was his first time on a podcast, you were gonna get him, right?
So this is your second time to run, correct?
This will be my third time running.
Third time.
The first one was really quick and short that for the election that I ran against the non-known the next election.
Okay, okay. So this is your second or third time?
This will be my third time running.
For for the same position, okay.
Okay, okay. So has anything changed from the first two times to this time?
So Quentin, a little bit better.
Yeah, you know him a little better.
I'm half the man I used to be.
Yeah, you lost some weight, right? Yeah.
I guess I guess the the real question is, what 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 could he be doing better that you feel like you're bringing to the table?
I don't know. We just, I I think everybody is a neighbor and everybody just I I I would, or I'm going to if I'm elected, is reach out to everybody and grab people and ask them what's going on instead of waiting for people to ask me what's going on. Uh, I don't don't know if that's happening to Quentin or not, but that's my, that's what I really it's not visible, if you want to call it that.
That's your.
Be happening, but it's just not visible.
Seems that's your perception that it's that city council is not reaching out to the neighbors.
And the city count. I don't know. I don't I don't have anything bad. Bernie's a great place to live.
Sure.
The city council has done great things.
Okay.
It's just that I've got a background with the management of the installations and management of of infrastructure and.
You want to put your skills to to work?
Right. And yeah.
Okay.
And I've got time. I just finished I'm the commander of the American Legion right now.
Okay.
And what last year or the last election, Quentin and I talked and said, Quentin, you're, I'm not gonna run because I do have, I do want to take I need to get veterans to be veterans together. And there's been a big rift between the two of the organizations in town.
Right.
And now we've got them working together. They're doing ceremonies, we're talking, nobody thinks ill of anybody anymore. So I've accomplished, that's the biggest thing I wanted to accomplish. And now that it's done, I can move back and look at the city and look at the things that I could do or things that I could help.
Fair enough.
Very good, very good.
Quentin, what are, let's turn it over to you. I mean, you you've been doing this a while. What are you the most proud of that you've accomplished? And what do you feel like you still need to accomplish?
Well, I think some of our bare accomplishments is just you know, when I got in, we were spending very small percentage of our budget was based upon road management, maintenance and upkeep of our roads. I think we were spending about a hundred thousand dollars in our roads. And it was well underfunded. And so one of the things I wanted to do is I wanted to make sure that we were spending our tax money wisely and maybe reallocate some of our spending. And we've increased, I think we're spending seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, which is still dropping the bucket in our in our total overall budget. So it's something I want to, we're we're going to continue. I'm working with staff, I'm working with other council members to continually increase our spending on our roads and maintenance. Keep, that's one of our primary responsibilities is managing our infrastructure and the stuff that we have on the ground. We've got some serious roads in town need serious repair. And so it's not going to happen overnight. It's something that's going to take a lot to do. And so increasing that, I'm certainly proud of that. Worked with the council, worked throughout each one of our budget cycles to increase that incrementally. And I've got some little side projects, so you know. You know, when we decided to to look at some projects for spending, you know, we didn't go, we could have went out there and got some certificates obligation and dropped forty million dollars on the on the city citizens. But instead of doing that, we talked about how might we go about putting some infrastructure projects? Acquisition of parks and road improvements. And we took that to the citizens and we put up for a vote and I'm I'm proud that we got such a a good turnout and a positive reaction. And we got both of those bonds passed. And so now the work begins, you know, we got staff working hard to implement that. Now we're kind of come up with roads are expensive, parks, you know, that what we thought was a twenty million dollar project might be a twenty-one, twenty-two million dollar project. And so we got to find ways to fund those projects. We've got the we've got the funds, we've got the citizens. We know the citizens want these projects. We've got majority of the funding. So we might have to tweak some of our future financing, our future funding from the city and reallocate some of our obligations or wants and desires for projects to make sure some of these things get done in a timely manner.
Okay. Well, you know, before before the the podcast, we were talking with you and and our our intern Caitlin, who's working here, you she's she went to high school here in Bernie and I think we asked her, John, or you asked her, you know, what do we need here from from your perspective? And she said, what, like some some more activities, something after six PM?
Right, right, right. For, you know, for teenagers.
Right. And you know, and you mentioned something about some some more parks or.
Well, one of the, call it pet project.
Yes.
I looked and I got this from our master plan. I did just pull this out of the air.
Okay.
This was a, this was an item in our in our long-term master plan. It's a ten-year kind of a rolling plan that we were going in there implementing regularly. But it was a water parks terrace park and located at the city, the old city pool site right there next to the well site.
Where they have the market days.
Days next to the Kendall Land.
Yeah.
And that site is kind of just, they filled in the pool. They just push some dirt into it, grow through through some grass, mostly weeds over that site. And it's kind of a just a empty spot, city-owned park.
It's a great spot for something.
And so we reached out to some other interested parties. We have some private groups that said that they they wanted to see water parks parterres. So in the in the ten-year plan, the water and the the parks plan, there's a a little fountain, little designed fountain, not a splash pad per se, just a a fountain. And so I kind of like added, it's like, what about maybe some lights and some fountains, maybe the interactive aspect of the fountains? And so we kind of kind of what we talked about, maybe it's something like the Pearl.
Yes.
And that's more of a lighting in a fountains, interactive workings. And so we kind of sat down with some private groups. We had some we had some meetings about it. We got some designs and some schematics. And what's come together is a really nice, good plan that this outside group thought that they needed to go get some funding. And they're talking about bringing a million dollars to the table to make this project happen. It probably would cost a million dollars with all the elements that they want. And I'm fully, I want to see a public-private partnership, especially for infrastructure projects like this that the community could use, drive some more traffic downtown, have a little spot for our youth to meet and play around, you know, it gets hot in the summertime. And it, you know, the city right now, city seems like city downtown just dies after six o'clock.
Right.
And it's still, you know, the sun's up high, it's still hot outside and it'd be nice to have a little twist to go out there for at the end, our headwaters of our walking trails.
Sure.
To be able to go out there and splash around and maybe give some incentive to our local downtown businesses to stay open just a little bit longer. So that's one of the little side projects I've been working on, trying to encourage our public-private partnerships out there. Look forward to working with them in the future to try to try that.
So have we talked ETJ or?
Not yet.
Mobility yet?
Yeah, let's get into the nitty gritty.
So Dan, tell us, tell us what you think, if you think we have any challenges that that need to be worked on concerning mobility.
Dan, you were running late today.
Just coming here. There are challenges on mobility. Mobility going from point A to point B needs to be fixed or tweaked, whichever. And most of the time, it's only two or three times a day that you can't get through someplace at a decent at a decent time or without stopping very long. If we're just talking, if you're if you're kind of poking the bear to talk about a circle going around Bernie, I don't think that is a good plan. Now, do we need a relief off forty-six? Sure. We do we need a relief from I-ten to forty-six? Yes. But where and how we do that? I don't think a circle around would would fix that. Or, you know, I think it would create more problems because now you're creating places where people want to build more stuff around those roads. I guess that's that's my biggest or easiest because everyone's talking to me about in layman's terms when when I talk to my neighbors or even people that aren't our neighbors in our district, because our district goes real long now. It's yeah, it's just something simple to go from A to B. How do you get, how do you get traffic out of A to B? And where is that traffic really congested?
And then, you know, to accomplish a lot of this, you've got to work with the county, obviously, and state, text out. How do you feel our current city council and county are working together? Do you think they're doing a good job? Do you think that we need to do better?
My my whole thing is we need to talk. I think, I personally think we need to do better because that is one of the things I think is most important is we have to mesh our everything we're doing. One, so we share dollars. Even with text out, text out, if we bring money to the table, text that usually brings money also. Text that says, you bring X to the table and we'll we'll help you with this project. I think there's more that could be done. I'm not gonna point a finger and say it's that this person, that person, or who did it, or when it wasn't, when it wanted to communication had started disappearing. But it happened sometime since I was ready for election in the past.
Okay.
And there are relief roads or were supposed to be, but they're now business districts.
And Quentin, you've been in five years, you said? And in those five years, have you seen an improvement or a breakdown in communication between city and county?
To say failure, not failure, a lack of communication of you know, one of the strangest things I kind of found out about after the fact was we had two commissioners. As much as I probably should, I don't reach out to commissioners that often. But I didn't know we had two commissioners working on the the infrastructure, the
Inter-local Agreement.
For fifteen months. We had two commissioners working on that for fifteen months. But they never, they never reached out to us. They never reached out to them. I didn't know they were doing it.
Right.
But so I would say if you have a committee that has an interlocal agreement between two parties and one doesn't know the others having a discussion or talk about it, there was probably a breakdown somewhere along the way. And so Joe Macaluso and I have been designated by the council to sit down and work with them and we're we're going to get that done. We're gonna we're gonna sit down with them. I think we're trying to work updates right now. And so the county in the city, you know, we're all county residents too. My largest tax, a largest proportion of my tax bill is is the school in the county, right? So we need to have a say in as well. We I have my representative or for my district and I need to reach out to them and have a better, probably a more open conversation with them on a regular basis, probably all all the commissioners as well. But we we need to do better. It's something that I want to, I want to do better. I'm going to put more focus on that going forward. And that's going to start with this little committee that we're putting together between the the two commissioners.
Who are the two commissioners?
The Andrea and Chad Carpenter.
Okay, Chad Carpenter and Andrew Wijen, uh huh, yes.
Yes. So they're they're the the two that have been designated by the Commissioners Court, Joe Macaluso and myself. And so we're just kind of coordinating, you know, they they're very independent. They they don't have a lot of staff on the county side, but from the city side, we're backed up by a city manager and then the city staff. So I think they're working out the coordination between all the groups and maybe some attorneys on each side. Get everybody in a room and sit down, see if we can.
And what happens if you and, because Dr. Macaluso is running for reelection as well. What happens if you and Dr. Macaluso do are not reelected? Does that mean by default, the the new city councilman will be on that committee? Or do they take some more experienced councilmen to to replace your guy?
You know, we we may get started before the election.
Right.
Yeah, we probably finish it.
Right.
But I'd love to be able to come together in one meeting hash this out. But as much I've been on the noise committee, we've had numerous numerous noise committee.
The noise committee.
I didn't know there was a noise committee.
Those loud cats in the in town.
Yes.
But I I don't know. I don't know how it works.
It's a good question, right?
Reelected, how might go forward? I imagine the city council would just need to come back together and just.
And reelect or reappoint.
Reappoint a couple of people to to serve us.
So Dan wouldn't automatically get that seat?
I imagine not.
Okay.
He certainly could raise his hand and say, I want to fight that fight or I want to, if he's got something to say.
Sure.
You know, anything we do and it's not, so it's not, it's not, I am not going to get everything I want or anything I want per se. Everything we do inside this committee is going to come back before Commissioners Court, be, you know, delayed before the Commissioners Court and it's going to come back to the full council. And that's where it'll be voted. I think the breakdown is, you know, that's, they were dealing with the city manager. I think the city manager knew that they were talking about this interlocal agreement. Heck, I talked to the city manager about the interlocal agreement, some things we might do. But I didn't know they had, not, I won't say for fifteen months, I didn't know. I didn't know until probably about twelve months. But they had this, they had a couple of commissioners working on that. But the city manager, they had to put his kind of his best effort, you know. I wonder what my this council members would accept. And and so he had played a role in that. But I think giving everybody in one room, we can do better, you know, and whether it's Dan or, and I'm sure I'm sure we can get to some compromise. You know, we're probably not going to get everything.
Got you.
The interlocal agreement has changed with the legislature and some of the changes they've made in TJ and what we can do. Now you can opt out of the ETJ. Well, how does that affect X, Y, and Z? So there's some things we need to seriously sit down and talk.
So it's more than the ETJ, the the commission or the group? You're in you're in the local, you're in our government or in our local group that you have, that's that's made, that's more than just the ETJ that it's going to discuss.
It no, it only affects the ETJ. That's what the interlocal agreement the effects.
Only the people living.
Yeah, it's not the city. It's it's the ring between the city and the county. And it's that, right now, it's that mile. And when we, once the city is reached twenty-five thousand in citizens, I think it's twenty-five or thirty, it'll extend out two miles. And so we're talking about that ring around the city that is not, it's not quite in the city, but certainly affects the city. You know, we see development going just outside the city.
Sure.
You know, that's where all your big acreage tracks are. There's there's some inter smaller tracks, you know, inside the city, but your bigger developments are going to be developing outside the city.
And I got to ask this question. Are you pro-growth or do we need to stop all the growth here, Dan? In Bernie, Kendall County?
Let's see, what's the right way to put it? Growth will happen. You cannot stop it. But I think there are tools that we can use to I don't know what the right word, slow isn't the right word, stop isn't the right word. There are ways to manage or assist the management of the growth. And a lot of it is is a discussion where I was saying communication is one of the biggest things, even with the developer, communication.
Sure.
The landowner, before they sell it to a developer, the communication. Or before they sell it, it automatically becomes part of the city. That communication. So there's a lot of agreements out there for annexation. I think communication is where where we will make our biggest bang for the buck.
Sure. And John, we we get, we hear this a lot. It's pretty unfair to these. Sure. And John, we we get, we hear this a lot. It's pretty unfair to these guys, county commissioner, city councilman, they they label them pro-growth or. Or uh, pro-developer and and it kind of just throw them into that.
Right.
Jar and it's not that.
It's not that simple.
And I think Dan answered it correctly. It's like, growth's going to happen.
It is.
We just got to know how to manage it and uh, did, did, you know, so I've just noticed that that's kind of unfair. So the citizens, constituents, you need to give these guys a break, you know, don't label them pro-growth or not pro, not pro-growth. It's more complicated than that.
Even after they get out of office?
You're, all your, all, basically what you said, you want to mitigate the mission creep.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a nice little army, army term.
That's exactly what that was, yeah.
Um, and and uh, do you ever get accused of being uh, anti-growth or pro-growth in your time?
Been accused of being in the pocket of the developers, uh, for one reason or other. It's, I don't know where it came from.
Right.
But uh, you know, right as I was coming on city council, Shoreline was the big deal. Shoreline started out as a county project. It was not in the city. It was in the county. Um, they were, they were annexed in to the city kind of after the fact. It was when the city still had. Authority to annex in forced annexations, which there were a vast number of forced annexations and I voted against those. And uh, I voted against most of them. I I don't know if there was any that I did vote, but most of them I did vote against. I I thought forced annexation was the wrong way to go, but we were losing that authority and they, I think it was maybe driven by city staff. To uh, drive home this one final, you know, fill the holes within the, within the city. Uh, for with forced annexations. Hey, I wasn't in favor then, but we're dealing with it, you know, it's, we lost that, we lost that privilege.
Yeah.
All our privilege. Uh, we can't do forced annexations anymore, which I'm in fame, I'm in legislature. I think the legislature had their finger on that.
Right.
And and saw maybe being abused. Um, and uh, whether we were. I don't think we were an abuser, but we certainly took a an opportunity right there at the last hour to do some annexations that I didn't agree with. But uh, I I seem to be a lone voice on that at the county council, so I lost that fight.
John, are you, are you a pro-growth or anti-growth? Are you that guy that's going to stand on highway forty-six and tell everybody to stop coming into town or? How do you feel about it?
It's going to happen. And it's going to happen whether I want it to or not, or whatever. City council does or our county commissioner, so.
People are moving.
Uh, ultimately, eh, we we need to do it smart. And taking the consideration, I'm I'm obviously I'm a property rights, individual property rights type person. So. If I decided I wanted to sell it, you know, our place to Six Flags one day or.
You want to have that ability.
Expand the 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 quarry that's on the other side of our place. We want to do that, whatever it may be, we should have the right to do that. So there there is a happy medium here somewhere, but it it, you can't get there without having open communication.
Right.
Um, and 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 I'm still, I'm going to say it again. I know we we talked about it the last time. I'm not quite sure the two and two. Is going to be the solution. I think they'll probably get close. Yeah, I I think, I think we're, it, there's so much involved.
Yes.
That it it somehow, we're going to have to find a way for everybody to get together without violating. Any of the 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 rules, governmental rules.
Sure.
And and it get this thing hammered out because. I have a feeling if we don't get it hammered out soon, it's just going to, it's, we're just kicking the can down the road.
Sure. Well, John, do you have any more questions for our our guest today before we ask him to?
No, but give me an opportunity and I'll think about something else to talk about.
What what we typically do, gentlemen, is at the end, we give each one of you an opportunity to give like about a one-minute uh. Uh, presentation or closing as to why we should uh, elect you. So in your case, uh, Dan, why should the the. The neighbors of your district in Bernie elect you over the current incumbent, Mr. Quentin Scott?
Hmm. See my notes.
Oh, you have a long list.
No, it's a short list. Uh. First of all, the the reason why I asked if the interlocal agreement that we're working on is just the E T J. Because there's many interlocal agreements that can be worked on. Uh, and that's part of. What I've seen with even a military, intergovernmental organizations, well. Working on fire support to each other. Uh, I'm sure, I know we have fire support agreements amongst the volunteer fire departments around here. Uh, that's an interlocal agreement, if you want, if you want to call it. That's the only reason why I asked, is just want to make sure it was just the E T J because. Uh, there are a lot of people that I talk to that are in the E T J and are happy. No, not usually. Uh, they're, because they don't have a vote to say anything. That's their biggest complaint. If you're going to give me, if you're going to take me and I got to follow your rules, why, I'm going to have a tea party. Uh, and now with the, the new uh, Senate uh. What's it called? Thing that the Senate just passed, S B, whatever. Uh. There are now rules in place that you can be able to get out of uh, E T, out of an E T J if you follow certain rules. Uh, but I think the, the bright answer is the county and the city working together to figure out what is the right answer.
Fair enough.
Uh. I under- uh, because I understand infrastructure. I've been doing planning for over thirty-five years. I've been teaching planning. I've taught uh, the school that teaches the Garrison commanders. The military mayors slash uh, city managers. Uh. I just, I I bring a lot of things that I could bring people together and and talk.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I'm more of a low-key type, know how to sit up and let's stand and put a bike in front of me.
Fair enough. Well, you did good today.
You did really well, absolutely.
Thank you again, Dan, for your courage uh, to run for office and and volunteer to do this again. So we appreciate that. We need more people to get involved and.
Absolutely.
And and thank you for uh, continuing to to go uh, go at bat here, Quentin. Uh, tell us why. We should elect you over your challenger.
Well, I I I think right now the city council is in a in a pivotable pivotal uh, position. There are a lot of things going on. I think my experience, I I know that Dan can do this, uh. One may, one day he might. Uh, I I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not saying I'm in here forever. Uh, certainly. Citizens can vote me out for at any time, but I I've got the experience. Um, there's a lot of things on the table that are in flux right now. We've got the interlo- local agreement. There's. There's a, a lot of talk about the, the mobility plan, transportation plan. These are super important things. Uh. Our intersections are are needing help. That's, our intersections are where we're going to kind of move people through the town. Uh, those need work. Uh, we're spending, we've got a lot of money to spend from the bonds. I want to see those projects through. Um. These things are, I I'm excited to be on city council. I'm I'm happy to serve. I get phone calls from our, uh, from our neighbors, our constituents. Um. People not in my district, you know, I was just meeting with somebody outside of my district the other day. Um, I am here, I I love the work. And I I'm here for as long as the citizens want me here. And so I ask for your vote. I'm willing to work. Um, and when, as long as I'm here, the city is going to, we're going to work forward to make the city a a great place to live. Just like we've, you know, in twenty years, we can look back and people can say, hey, twenty years, it was such a great place to live. If we can make it better, we can make it the Bernie of. What our, our old timers around here, they remember the good old days of Bernie. Well, today, even though there's a little bit of strife and. Uh, contention about inter- inner, interlocal agreements and transportation. Uh, we can still look back and and say, these were the good times of Bernie. Bernie's a great place to live. And I just look forward to serving.
Well, thank you, Mr. Scott, Quentin Scott, Dan Weiss. Uh, don't forget, folks, April twenty-second is early voting. And uh, May fourth is uh, election.
Election day, correct.
Well, uh, John's been a pleasure again sitting next to you and and visiting with some fine folks that are making Bernie better.
Right, yes.
And so uh, thank you, folks, for listening to the Texas Examiner. As John likes to remind everybody, don't forget to like and subscribe because that helps our algorithms. And it reaches more people. Please tell your friends and family about the Texas Examiner. And if you have a topic that you'd like for us to cover in one of our future shows, uh, also contact us. We've had some exciting shows. They haven't all just been about politics. We've had a a show uh, on sex trafficking with an actual victim here. We've had a show with a. An international gun runner or gun gun uh, uh, dealer, right?
Yes.
And uh, we 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 strive to have interesting content, so please uh, get involved.
Again, folks, thank you very much. Don't forget, like, subscribe. You know the deal. Thank y'all and have a great day.